Call tonight's regular city council meeting and the Des Moines City Council to order for September 5th. And if we could have Councilmember Mahoney lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, please let the record show that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Bangs. She will be joining us by telephone later on this evening. Is there any correspondence?
Yes, Mayor, we received a note from Joe Schott, who just wanted to thank everyone for the lovely flower planters all down Marine View Drive in the Marina District and downtown.
Also, Mayor, we received a letter which is on the dais from Stephen Metrick, the executive director of the Port of Seattle, in response to a letter that we had sent to the port regarding our, the council's decision to temporarily suspend participation in the START program. We'll be reviewing that letter and developing an appropriate response and show council what we've come up with at a future point. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we have a really full agenda tonight, and we have some guests that have joined us. So with your indulgence, I'd like to move out the presiding officer's report and then go to our consent agenda so we can get the city business and our presentations. Well, and then follow into our presentations because we have a number of guests. And then we'll go back into the agenda from there in terms of comments and so forth. Does that meet everybody's approval? Okay, thank you. So I'm going to dial in Councilmember Bangs at this point. This is great. You memorized her name?
Hello?
Hi, Louisa, this is Mayor Pena calling you from the Des Moines City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a slightly modified agenda. We are working with, we're going to do an element of the presiding officer's report right now, and then we will follow that by the consent agenda and then the admin report, presentations after that. I know that you want to be here through the consent, so you will, you're welcome to stay on as long as you're able.
Thank you.
At this point, it's a real honor to formally recognize our city manager, Mr. Michael Mathias. He received the 2019 Award of Excellence, the Washington City County Management Association's top award that recognizes outstanding administrators or managers who have enhanced the effectiveness of local elected officials and consistently initiated creative and successful programs. This award was presented to him, to Michael, on August 14th, 2019, at the WCMA Summer Conference in Kennewick, Washington. And if, Michael, if you could come to the podium, I'd like to present it to you. The award reads, "The 2019 WCMA Award Presented to Michael Mathias, City of Des Moines Excellence Award Manager or Administrator of the Population Over 10,000." It was offered and presented as of August 2019. Michael, this is a real testament to the hard work you do, and congratulations.
This will probably be like deja vu for Deputy Mayor Pennington, who actually flew over to Kennewick for the award. I just wanted to say a few words tonight and paid for drinks after. It was great. But I just want to say a few words, you know, and this is what I said at the conference, and everyone who's city manager or city administrator understood that you're only as good as your team. And, you know, I'm blessed to work every day. Just with an incredible team, both on the council and both the staff. And I wake up every morning grateful to come to work and work with the people that I do, and they're the ones that make excellence. And, you know, I happen to have a great fortunate position to participate in that, and I'm eternally grateful, so thank you very much.
Michael, could you hold on? Michael? If we could get the council to come up front? Councilmember Bangs, we're going to take a photograph. We can shoot another one next time you're here, but you'll have to be here in spirit tonight. The cutout got caught up with the printer, so we'll catch that next time.
Photoshop.
Photoshop, thank Photoshop.
That's a tough act to follow, Michael. But we'll keep going. At this time, I'm going to take us to our consent agenda. So would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. Item three, draft resolution number 19-085, declaring the intent to adopt legislation to authorize the sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing. Item four, King County Youth and Amateur Sport Grant, Beach Park Auditorium Floor. Item five, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Item six, National Recovery Month. Item seven, Draft Ordinance 18-107, Small Self-Facilities Franchise Agreement with Extonet Systems, Inc., second reading. Item eight, Draft Resolution 19-064, setting a public hearing date for vacating the public right away for South 236th Street, Highline College. Item nine, 2019 to 2021 Recycling Program Funding Grant. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Buxton. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a council member would like to remove? Councilmember Bangs?
I'm not, I'm looking through my packet here, and I make a comment without removing it, or?
Because you've dialed in, I think you should, we'll allow you to make the comment.
Okay, I just wanted to make certain that when we're looking at consent agenda item number three, that we are understanding, at least everyone that's listening, needs to understand this is not an increase in any tax.
Actually, there were, there will be comments made about this for clarification to those listening. This is not a new tax. It will not increase taxes for the residents of Des Moines. If ultimately approved, the funds would be redirected from the state to the city for affordable housing. We'll explore the opportunities to use these as part of the regional effort that we're, and we're a member of a consortium that is involved in that. So there will be more, there will be more comments made about this a little bit later. And I believe there is, we have someone who's come, that will address it under public comment as well.
Very good, thank you.
So yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Normally, I would do this during council member comments, but since we're doing the consent agenda now, I want to say this now. We are about to proclaim September is National Recovery Month, and I brought this up a couple of years ago. And everybody in Des Moines who is willing to face their hurts, habits, and hangups and get recovery, you need to know that this city stands by you, and we want to see you recover and do well. There's nothing to be ashamed about. We've all had our mistakes in life, and I've been involved in recovery groups for close to 20 years. And I want you to know, as the mayor reads this proclamation into the record, that this council stands with you as you face your issues and get well. This city covers you. And that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do want the council to know that, yes, I would allow for comments, but if you're, if it's just a positive remark, as to many are, for this, for these items, then you're welcome to make them under your regular comment spot that we will get to. I'm just trying to ensure that the city business gets done tonight. So is there anyone else who has to, needs, okay, then all those seeing no hands, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bangs?
Aye.
Okay, passes seven zero. And this will take us from the consent agenda now on to the administration report, and I will end those presentations. So, Michael Mathias, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to call up Chief Thomas. At the budget retreat, we talked with council about a number of organizational changes that we've made, a very positive way to enhance our succession planning, kind of enhance our organizational structure, provide continuity of operations in a number of departments. And so tonight, very pleased to have the chief introduce the newest member of the police department, and we're very, very pleased about this appointment. Chief?
Great, thank you very much. Assistant Chief Mark Cooley, if you'd step on up here for a second. Mark comes to our department with 27 years of experience with the Washington State Patrol and the last seven years with the Washington State Insurance Commissioner's Office as the chief of the Investigations Division, Fraud Investigations Division. He primarily will work in charge of our Investigations Division and working with our emergency management services for the city. So I would just like to welcome Mark to our city and as we move forward. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but we're moving right along. So thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to go to Marine Mammal Rescue, SR3. We have Casey McLean here as the executive director, and SR3 is a new addition to the city. And council at the last meeting had passed the lease agreement, and we'd hoped to have a presentation that time, but it kind of ran into our budget retreat. So we asked Casey to come back and talk with us about your programs. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to everyone tonight. For those of you that may not know, SR3, we are a small nonprofit, and we do a lot of things with marine mammals. One of the most important things we're going to be doing that's happening in your own backyard is building a hospital. So a hospital will help everything from sea turtles, we do have sea turtles here, all the way up to about a 14-foot small porpoise or small whale. So the reason we're doing this is because we really don't have any options for these animals to get help when they are sick, injured, or entangled here in Washington. So we drive them all the way to California in our ambulance, which you guys will start to see around town if you have not already. It's highly decorated. You won't miss it. I promise. We do not look like the other ambulances. But we use that to transport these animals when they need care. So it's really unique that Des Moines is going to be the home of the very first one of these in the entire Pacific Northwest, and we're so grateful for your vision to see that with us. And we're super excited to become part of the community. We do a lot of public education and outreach, so you'll see me or my staff out at school presentations, yacht clubs, anyone basically who wants to listen about who we are and what we do, we're willing to come and talk to them. We have three major programs, the one being response, which is for sick or injured animals on the beach, or for entangled whales, which is why I was not here at the last meeting. I was actually out responding to an entangled whale. Usually, they're caught in fishing gear, so we help to free them from that. And then we also have the hospital that we're building, which will be, in our first phase, will be partially open to the public, but eventually in our final build-out, we will have an education center for people to come and visit and learn more about the problems these animals face. And then finally, we do research with southern resident killer whales. You guys probably all know about the problems these animals are having. We're down to 73 with the loss of three adults this year, so that's pretty heartbreaking. And we do aerial drone surveys with them to assess their health. So you'll see a lot of that research coming right out of your own backyards as well. Talks will be given. People will really be able to get educated about what's going on in our own backyard. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here. Do you want to take any questions?
Thank you, yeah. Council, any comments or questions?
Councilmember Mahoney?
So, understand your little, your situation in West Seattle. You have, I think it's what, 25,000 or 30,000 visitors a year?
Well, West Seattle right now, we reach about 20,000 people, but we do that outside of our, our small office space. But in general, these facilities, there are 32 of them throughout the country. They range anywhere from 15,000 all the way up to well over 100,000 visitors a year for the very largest one.
Well, that sounds like a great opportunity for Des Moines and you as well.
Yeah, it's a huge opportunity, bring the community in, not only for people just coming to visit, but also for your students that are right here at Highline College to get hands-on experience, for people who are retired that want to volunteer and love this. Pretty much anybody, really. It's a great community feature.
That was my next question, is maybe we could provide some information for those that might want to volunteer where they can get in contact with you?
Yeah, absolutely. I brought some brochures with me, so I will leave those. Anybody's welcome to. I think a lot of people here have my contact info. I welcome phone calls or emails. We're really looking forward to getting everybody actually involved, hands-on. I've already told plenty of the city council members, they've signed up for a volunteer shift.
And isn't there a date in the near future at a farmer's market where you're going to have a lot of information available?
Yes, we will be doing the international beach cleanup on the 21st. He's such a primer, I love it. Yeah, so feel free, we'll have our education booth there. There'll be divers in the water collecting trash. We'll be, you know, analyzing everything that's coming out and teaching people about how this stuff really affects our marine wildlife.
Welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great, well, I welcome any, any time to reach out, and I'd love to chat with you about it. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Also this evening, we've invited Devin Schrum to speak with us. Devin is the new, Chief Taylor, executive director of SCORE. And the city, you know, we've had an interesting relationship with SCORE, and I went into this in some depth at the budget retreat. But there were a number of challenges. Devin, it was amazing, but in August, I think it was a year that you've been here, and it seems like it just passed so quickly. But there were significant challenges facing SCORE as an institution and facing the city of Des Moines as a participant. And Councilmember Back had done stellar job of representing the interests of the city. But we'd seen escalating costs occur. Federal Way decided in their wisdom that they were better off outside of SCORE, so they're withdrawing as of the 1st of January. And there were financial issues, and there was, I would say, fairly complex fee structure that perhaps didn't accurately reflect the value of what was being provided. And so Devin kind of walked right into all of that. And one of the things that happened were some task forces were formed, and for us, we had the participation of Beth N. Rowe, our finance director, and Chief Thomas, and Tim, our, Tim George, our city attorney, to try to work through the issues that were, needed to be addressed, both on our part and the part of the other cities. And I can only say Devin has done an amazing job, and pleased to have you here. I think we've come out on the right side of the equation. This is only year one, but we're looking forward to the future. And with that, I'll let you take it.
Thank you. Well, and thank you for having me out here. Just as Michael described, my first month with Federal Way leaving, we were facing a $5 million projected loss. And so immediately, like September, I sent a letter off to Department of Corrections and began negotiating a rate increase with Department of Corrections, and also seeking money back in terms of medical care or medical rate from Department of Corrections. I also met and testified in front of the Washington State Legislature, advocating for the Department of Corrections, who is limited by statute as to what they can fund for jail costs to increase their ability to not be such a burden. And so we were able in 2018 to bring in an additional $2 million just through those conversations and negotiations. Also, immediately, we reduced costs by $2 million in 2018. Immediately started looking at overtime and thinking through shift coverage and created a mid-shift, reduced overtime by, just it's trending 33% over where we were last year at the same time. I also did that by hiring the number of custody staff that we were allowed to have. I think that there was a recruitment issue at some point. That is no longer the case. And I'm proud to say that we're fully staffed. I also delayed hiring some of our administrative positions, and that helped make up that $2 million in reduction of costs. For 2019, these same strategies are, have been continued for another $2 million in revenue. As Michael described, we almost immediately before the end of the year hired Burke Consulting to come and work with SCORE staff. We had the task force of finance managers and police chiefs. And they worked very, very hard over several meetings to define several key policy strategies that would help lead SCORE to a better, more sustainable future. But one thing I would mention, SCORE, with my position, the second position, and shortly thereafter, our finance director, we had major leadership transition in SCORE. The stakeholder work started, and the four major principles that everybody agreed on, and this was not a room where everybody agreed on a lot of things. Everybody agreed that whatever funding model or strategy we had to have would be predictable, stable, equitable, and feasible. And so these strategies I've listed for you here, and I'll just describe them very briefly. SCORE had kind of a weird way of budgeting for the future, and we've kind of reset that to where we look at all of our contract revenue from the previous year and apply all of that to the next year. And there is one thing that I can say right now is that that's business we can count on and continue to count on. And so we're including that, which means we're not passing perceived costs or escalation of costs onto our owner cities. Debt service is just paid through SCORE. SCORE has gone through several different mechanisms of paying owner cities debt service, and that is just built straight into our operations budget going forward. Everybody can see it, and we can count on it, and that goes to predictability as well. We've developed and continue to refine a comprehensive housing contract system. So this year, we were able to analyze and make necessary changes. We streamlined the contracts, had them vetted through our owner cities city attorneys. These contracts now protect SCORE's interests. They're legally defensible and considers and incorporates cost recovery. We've also included an annual contract review system to ensure that we stay on top of that. Policy strategy number four was transitioning SCORE to a biennial budget. That happens after 2020. 2020 is our last hopeful annual budget, and in 2021 budget cycle, we will go into a biennial budget. And that just helps me plan and prepare over a longer future and make adjustments as necessary without such big swings. And also, going toward predictability, is developing a six-year cost projection schedule. I know that cities are working very hard to predict their costs well into the future, and SCORE should be doing that as well. And so we're building that system right now. We've been very fortunate to be able to borrow from our owner cities some of the models that they're using, and we're working on that, and we'll have that fully fleshed out by 2021. And then this last one is my favorite, because it's the one that in some ways is the easiest to do, the easiest to teach, and the easiest to keep moving forward, and that's just mission-based management. SCORE's mission is to provide professional, cost-effective, and efficient correctional services to our member cities. That is going to be incorporated into all budget-based decisions and management philosophies. As such, SCORE is going to continue to identify and modify current practices or policies that drive costs and seek to correct that. Our 2020 budget, oh, sorry. Our 2020 budget assumes several different things. Revenue expenditures and debt are all figured into our operating budget. It accounts for Federal Way leaving. We were able to actually reduce member city contributions for 2020. We did that by adding a medical rate surcharge across all of our housing contracts, including Department of Corrections. We did receive proviso language in their budget that allowed them to negotiate that with us. I've been able to, through careful analysis, reduce projected expenditures by 600,000 over last year's budget. And most significantly, SCORE is now eligible to refund its bonds, and that is estimated at this time to be an approximate 500,000 savings a year. So all of that was a lot of work, but that's not all the work that we've done. I mentioned briefly the bond refunding. That requires a couple of different things. We have to really work through the separation of Federal Way. We have to look at our inter-local agreement. We have to agree on all of those principles that got SCORE built all over again and rebuild some of the trust that our owner cities had. SCORE is a great facility. It is actually, it is a national model, and I want the city to be very proud of its contribution to SCORE. That work has been taking place all along, and we're hopefully set to finish that work by the end of this year. Our policy system, SCORE had kind of a bifurcated policy system. Some policies applying to custody-only staff and some to administrative staff. One of my top priorities was to bring all policies into one system governing all staff so that everybody knows the expectations, what to follow, and is held accountable to that. That's been a huge project that is proving to be successful. It will also allow us to provide training and consistency of operations. And then this is, this goes along with, I think, maybe your topic later tonight, and that's a medication-assisted treatment program. I was able to apply for and receive 700,000, just over $700,000 worth of grant monies to further expand SCORE's MAP program or Medication-Assisted Treatment Program. And this is significant because for the first time, SCORE is actually able to induct folks on medications prior to release that would hopefully prevent a relapse upon release. So we're very proud of this program. It's just in its infancy. I would love to come back and share more information sometime with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Back?
Devin, first of all, thank you, and you've done remarkable in just one year. I was just on the board for two years prior to you getting there, and I could see all of the systemic issues with the leadership, but I didn't have any answers. You've got a lot of good answers here, and you're saving us all a lot of money, so thank you and good job. I don't know if you want to answer this, or Michael, or if it can be answered. So you mentioned we are going to look at the, you're going to look at the inter-local now, because now we are divorcing Federal Way from this bond agreement. So they have to pay in somehow. Is that going to be just a lump sum that SCORE gets? Or do they make a payment to us? That's question. That's question number one. If you don't know it, you can say so, or let us know later. Number two, is Federal Way now going to just be a contract city and they're going to have to pay higher rates like the other contract cities? Those are my only questions.
So I could answer both of those questions. The first question is, it's carefully timed process in which Federal Way will enter the market first and will enter there shortly thereafter. So they'll be paying off their bonds, right, just, and we'll follow right behind. No money has to exchange hands between SCORE and Federal Way, but they will be fully paying off of their bond debt or refinancing it away from and separate from SCORE. And then second to that is while we, it's truly up to the administrative board about allowing them to contract with us, but, and at this time, nobody has asked to contract with us. I can say that we have a number of different jurisdictions looking to contract with SCORE. And I would welcome all business at that higher rate structure. But at this time, nobody has asked for Federal Way, nor has Federal Way requested to contact with SCORE.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Back, I just would like to add to that. When SCORE originated, this, there were seven owner cities. And only six of those cities participated in the bond issuance, because one of the cities' bond rating would have dragged down everybody else's, and that was us. And so as we've gone through the process of healing financially and becoming strong and getting a bond upgrade recently from standard and pores to AA+, which was a three-step upgrade based on the work of this council to show leadership to address financial issues, now we will participate in this bond refinancing as an equal partner, not, and I'm not talking debt. But as, but as an equal partner, we won't be the, sort of the stepchild. And I think a lot of that has to do with Devin's leadership. I think the, for us, the truth is in the numbers. We were looking at $870,000 this year. And now with the process that we've been in, the city will pay about $300,000 less than that. We had a great deal of cooperation on the admin board from the other cities to support us in having some reduced costs and using some reserves to cover, cover some of the cities or all of the cities. So there's a lot to the story, and we're really pleased. And we will be bringing back to you some potential changes to the interlocal agreement, I think at the meeting of the 26th, that has to do with the bond refinance and some other issues. So that's a little more to the story. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other input I'll throw in, too, when you are creating the new interlocal, now we're, we're going to have an even number of cities. There's going to be six instead of seven. And so when I was on the board, I happened to be a tie-breaking vote on a number of things. So you may want to consider, what's the protocol if it's going to be a three-to-three split when you have an even number versus odd number of members?
Yes, I appreciate that. I think that's being worked through right now, but that's a good comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Appreciate that. So this, that was much different than the interaction we had with your predecessor, by the way. Yeah, I'd like to do right now is do an update on Redondo Pier and ask Brandon Carver, our public works director, to come forward. I think Scott Wilkins will participate in this as well, Harbor Master.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Council Mayor, Brandon Carver, Public Works Director. And just want to give you a brief update on our Redondo fishing pier. About, at the last council meeting on July 11th, we, let's see if we can get this started. Okay, here we go. At the last regular council meeting on July 11th, we staff notified the council that we had made a decision to close access to the Redondo fishing pier just hours before, I think, the council meeting. So this is really the first opportunity to kind of provide an update as to why we did So just as, you know, as a guiding principle, safety of the public is our, is our number one priority. We were notified of some potential concerns with some of the piers. And these, these are some video, pictures of some of the piers that are further out into the water. A lot of times, they are underwater, a majority of the time. This was an extremely low tide, and you can kind of see some definite concerns here with some of the potential structural integrity of the, of the piers. These timber piers tend to rot from the inside out, so to speak. And so a lot of times, the structural integrity isn't really visible from the outside. But if you get a log or, or, you know, you get some storm debris, it can take a piece of, of some of the piers off as you, as you see there. And, and so essentially, that was the reason why. And so we were thankful that we have diligent citizens and, and we took action immediately. So what have we done to date? As I mentioned, we closed the facility on July 11th. We had a team of structural reviewers out the next day and into that next week. And after a couple of weeks, they did their review and, and reporting. They definitely confirmed that the structure is unsafe and should remain closed. So as, as of today, the structure remains closed. We then looked at several alternatives with the consultant team as to what we could do. You know, are there some short-term repairs that could be made to reopen the facility, if any? Can the pier be refurbished, feasible? Is it practical? You know, and what, what would it cost to sort of overhaul the, the whole pier? You know, and as the picture dictate, denotes there, when you're given lemons, what, you know, try to make lemonade out of it. And so what are some other opportunities? We do know that there's, and I'll get into this a little bit, there's a restroom that we've had on our capital program to relocate. There's, we did take care of the bulkhead, but further north, it's a wood timber bulkhead, and we know how that's working in the North Marina parking lot. And so definitely, I'll, I'll just get into that in a little bit. But through that evaluation, the recommendation we're making is to replace the entire pier. And it certainly is not cheap. It's got a cost of about two and a half million. And, you know, we would be rebuilding this pier to marine standards, i.e. the, the boardwalk, you know, a sustainable concrete-type structure. The, the deck may not be concrete. We haven't got into any of the real design details, but you, you know, something that's going to be sustainable and last at least half a century. And so that's sort of the positive. The, the negative is, is we're going to recommend to remain, keep the pier closed. And the other sort of downside, I suppose, is these, you know, a significant investment like that doesn't happen overnight. I mean, this is a two-to-four-year process to, with permitting, design, construction. And obviously, that has some impact to some of the squid and fishing alternatives, and the Harbor Master will be talking about how we're going to address that, at least in, in the short term. We did look at some, as I mentioned, some of those other alternatives as far as a short-term repair. We could spend about $100,000. It would be, it would require some, it would be complex. It would, it would require some high maintenance in terms of inspection. There would be some closures during tidal cycles for, for high tides, and it wouldn't last, you know, with, with a whole lot of confidence that, that long. And then, of course, there's a midterm option where, that we looked at that essentially would replace the bad piers. There's about, about 30% of the piers were deemed to be structurally, having lost about 50% of their structural integrity. So, you know, a midterm-type repair would replace basically the bad piles. But you still have a aging wood structure that's, that's about 40 years old, that's well beyond sort of its expected life. So as I mentioned, those other opportunities with the restroom here in that upper picture, you can see it's also supported by the same sort of foundation with wood piers. Here's that wood bulkhead, which has had repairs on it over the years, similar to the North Bulkhead. You know, they just, they don't last forever. There's just some other pictures of, of the piers out under the, the fishing pier. So kind of diving into those opportunities, and, and this is sort of a breakdown. If we were to look at those three elements, the, the fishing pier replacement, which I mentioned, was two and a half million, just standalone projects. If we look at those as standalone projects, you know, you, you can see some costs there. And we feel pretty comfortable with these costs, at least based on the information we know to date. But you're talking about 7.2 million now, and each having its own permitting timeline. I will just say this, working in the water is difficult and challenging from a, from a permitting perspective. So that always, as we're experiencing with our Marina North Bulkhead, tends to drive some critical path in design. So it's just the nature of the beast. But if we looked at the opportunity to maybe do these three projects sort of holistically in one, one sort of combined project, like we're doing with the North Bulkhead and the North restroom, there could be an economy of scale to bring some of those costs down 15 to 25% potentially. As well as with the replacement of that timber bulkhead, there could be an opportunity to enhance water, you know, land access to the, to the water for the, the planned underwater dive park. So.
Mayor. Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, Brandon.
Yes.
We don't, we're not going to raise taxes on Redondo or other citizens to pay for this, are we?
Absolutely not. We would approach this project, I mean, this is kind of what we do, you know, whether it be the North Bulkhead, the Boardwalk, you know, we see this, these facilities as a regional draw, a regional asset. We would approach it with a grant strategy, similar to the, to the Marina North Bulkhead. We, we got other funding to help close the, the funding gap. Similar to the Boardwalk, we, we got funding outside the city. So absolutely, we would look at the, the grants that are available to, to, as well as, if needed, possibly real estate, our REIT, our real estate, you know, existing taxes that are brought in, like one-time sales tax. But from a property tax perspective, not at all. I mean, that, if you want to expand on that, Michael?
Yeah, no, thank you, Brandon. Great question, Councilmember, is that, you know, part of the, part of the reason that we would not do that, not that we would apply property tax ever to project like this, but because of council's actions in developing sufficient reserves and being able to prioritize capital projects as appropriate, the resources exist to do this. And I would just expand on Brandon's comment regarding the Boardwalk. It was about $4.4 million total, and we got about $4 million in grants to pay for that. So we're, we're at 10%. So great question, but just for clarity, the answer, as Brandon said, is absolutely not.
Thank you.
Councilmember Back had a question as well.
Brandon, you answered it already. You said there are some grants that are available. So we would have to have this on our capital improvement project list, correct? So what do we have to do to get that on that list ASAP?
Great question, and leads right into my next slide. So what's next? We would, we would be bringing for, that was, we would be bringing forward an adjustment to our capital improvement plan at the end of this month, where we showed and developed these three projects with some sort of funding strategy, again, with that regional asset in mind. And we would at that time be asking, seeking direction to, to start design on, specifically on the, on the Redondo Fishing Pier. And so that's our, that would be our approach. And real briefly, and we, I can come back for questions, but I wanted Scott to take a moment and just kind of explain how we're handling sort of the current need of squid and fishing.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Mr. Mathias, Mayor, City Council, Scott with your Des Moines Marina. Everybody knows how popular Redondo Fishing Pier is and everything else, but we're starting to get into the season that becomes very popular. Hundreds and hundreds of people are down there squidding and fishing October, November, and December. And so we're going to start promoting our fishing pier pass that we have at the Marina. It's a $25 pass. It gets you in-and-out privileges. It gets you 24-hour-a-day access. It gets you behind secured block gates at night. When the, when the Marina's closed, you still can access the Marina to go out on the fishing pier there. Along with that, it also lets you go down to Redondo and Park for free to walk the Boardwalk, play on the beach, or go to Salties. So we'll start promoting that. I know somebody in the city clerk's office, so hopefully I can speak with her. So I'm hoping I can speak with her and get it out on all the different social medias that she follows and monitors, and then we'll also get it on the, on the Marina websites. We'll post it down on Redondo, on the fencing, on the bathrooms, on the pay station and everything else. And there's also some squid community groups out there, so hopefully we can get in touch with them and really push this out there and show them that we, you know, trying to get an alternative for the situation right now. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Banks.
Yeah, I have a question for Brandon. So realizing we had to close Redondo Pier fairly quickly, what is your plan for communication out to citizens about, about this effort for getting ready to undertake?
I'm sorry, the last part, getting?
Getting ready to, please repeat the tail end of your question, Councilmember Banks.
What, what is your, what is your plan for communication out to citizens related to the project about, on the Redondo Pier?
Good question. Physically, right out there, we would have signs, we have signs right now saying it's closed. Obviously, if you go down there, you're notified, but we would use that same resource in the city clerk's office to broadcast through social media, web, any means we can to, to let folks know that the piers closed. And, I mean, our recommendation is that they remain closed, and then provide those same, redirect some of those recreational opportunities up to the, to the Marina.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember Banks?
Sort of, but I can certainly talk to our city manager a little later about some ideas.
Okay, thank you. And then we're open. I mean, we'll, yeah.
Okay, and I've got a couple, I think, Deputy Mayor Pennington.
So how old is this pier?
Early 80s, I think, is when we, we look, we found that it was constructed. Obviously, we, I think, annexed that whole area from King County in the late 90s. So pushing 40 years, I would, I would guess.
And how old are the other piers, the other two? And I know they are, they're not publicly owned, they're privately owned, but are they in that same age range?
The other two?
The, the one that Salties is on and the one that the Mast Center's on.
I don't know about Salties. I do know the Mast was rebuilt probably 10, 12 years ago, and if you look at that, it's a concrete substructure. Scott probably would have a better answer on this. Do you know, he might be able to better answer that.
No, I'm, I'm unsure about Salties also, but the Mast Center did con, they did concrete pilings with steel girders underneath now, so it's all, that one's been rebuilt.
Okay, because my concern was, is, and, and again, I know they're privately owned, but it, you know, if they're all of that same vintage, it sounds like with the exception of Mast, would it be wise? And maybe the owners have done that, but certainly if this pier's gotten beaten up, it would make sense that some of the others may have taken some, some damage, too. And I, the last thing I would like to see is some sort of a catastrophic event down there with, with a place full of people. So anyway, I don't know if there's been any reach-up, but that, that's my only thought down there. And thank you for, for what you've put together.
Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Buxton?
So we, if you, if we go move forward with this and, and put all three projects together, which includes a bulkhead project, and we've had quite a few challenges with the, the bulkhead down at the Marina, would, with the work that we have done for, with our national permits, would that kind of make a way for us here? Are we going to run into the same challenges that, like, delayed, pardon?
Are you asking if we could double bail off those permits?
Yeah, or is it, you know, is the, the work that we've done for our Marina Bulkhead, is that going to make a way for us to shorten the process here if we move forward?
I think the permitting will, will look similar. We would likely need to work with the same permitting agencies when you do in-water work. Specifically with NIMs, I don't, I don't have that answer to answer you confidently. We have to, you know, get the same concurrence through them, but certainly, like I said, water work is a challenge, and there's always permitting processes that need to go through and that.
Also, I think that it's safe to say that we've learned from this experience, and I think that we will be able to appropriately emphasize the value of redoing the pier for the, for the, you know, habitat and so forth. And we would look at that as, as a priority in terms of what we're doing, and that's a lesson we learned from the North Bulkhead. So still learning, actually.
And I would also add, when we redid the, the Boardwalk, we, we had some in-water mitigation that improved the habitat down there. So we certainly have learned, and we know what they're looking for. know what they're looking for, and be happy to make it, make it better when we're done.
Councilmember Mahoney?
So barring some red tape, right, by doing all three combined, we can enhance the Redondo community, tie that into what is the beautiful Boardwalk, and make it look similar and better, and make the facility more accessible. And we can do it for fifteen to twenty-five percent of the time in roughly, I'll say, three years, you know, averaging out. Seems like a no-brainer. What do you think about that?
I agree. Six million reasons that we'll, we'll, we'll find a way, yeah.
Okay, I only have one point I'd like to make. You know, I'm glad that, I, I hope we do have a conversation with Salties, because I, I hope, as a private business, they're aware of the maintenance of the piers and so forth, but I would hate to have them learn the hard way. I think Deputy Mayor Pennington's point is, is very smart. The other thing that I want to point out is that, you know, these are things that, when we weren't in as good a shape, didn't get, they didn't get paid attention to. And so we're at a point now where, yeah, sometimes it's going to take us maybe a little longer to react, but we can react, and we can get this done and get it done well. So again, I know we often, you know, thank the team for the fiscal responsibility they've shown in all aspects of the city's business, and I am also very proud of this council that I have the pleasure of serving with and, and working through these issues. But this is the fruit of the labor, folks. We get to take a project that is very important to this community, move it up on our capital facilities plan, get into planning, start working the channels to see what grant money we can get. And the, the thing that the community has to remember is that, just as Brandon pointed out, the community paid about ten percent of the Boardwalk. When you look at the two-sixteenth project, the community paid about ten percent of that as well. I mean, this is, this is how well this team is working together. So I want, I, I, I feel that if we just walked away with the good news and not thought about where we'd come to get here, we'd be overlooking something. This is the fruit of the labor that we're putting forward.
Well said. I think it was all good news, but I like the way you said it better.
Good thing. Anything else?
I just want to switch subjects and just talk real briefly about two-sixteenth. The project is going well. In fact, the contractor is ahead of schedule. However, it was, had a little hiccup with a water line. That Highline didn't realize the type of material it was. So what, essentially, they need, Highline Water District needs to replace about four hundred feet of, of, of a water line that they've declared an emergency on, and right now they're, they're trying to work in agreement with our contractor to do that work outside of the project essentially. And we're agreeable to that as long as it doesn't slow down our project. That said, some of that work is likely to occur at night because of where their new water line needs to go and some of the logistics there. So just kind of wanted to put on, put the, the community on notice, and that may, and there'll be some conditions on the, the Highline's work about noticing neighbors and variable message signs, and, you know, we will notify the public. But probably late September, potentially early October, there could be that work. And I just wanted to, you know, publicly thank Highline. They, you know, when the issue was discovered, they've just really stepped up to the plate, owned it. They have the resources to deal with the, the water line, and it's, it's, you know, it's not ideal, but it's, it's certainly a pleasure to work with them and get to a solution and keep our project moving. Any questions?
Real quick, Brandon, not this two-sixteenth, but on the other side of Pack Highway, I've had two people ask me, do you know what the timeline is when the bridge going over I-5 is coming out for the sound transit and 509? Is that within a year or two or sooner?
We, that's a good segue. I know Dan is going to be bringing forward to the council sort of a broader picture of all of the work, kind of sound transit and related, and I believe that's, I'll, I'll let Dan tell you. He's been working on it.
There'll be two closures related to that bridge. The first one will be by Sound Transit's contractor. They're going to have a long weekend closure, probably four or five days, where they will put in the box covert structure for their, the train, and that will take place in 2021. And then shortly after that, WashDOT will come through and they'll be replacing the bridge, rebuilding that bridge in its entirety and widening it out. That'll begin in 2022, and that will last for two years. There's going to be some significant road closures, and I'll give the council a report on that in the coming weeks.
If I could go back to the prior subject before we jump to the bridge, the, the partnership with Highline, I think it's fabulous that you have, that, that you guys are partnering to do this, because the one thing that we all get concerned about is here we have this amazing project, we're putting in roads, roads are estimated to be about a million dollars a mile. The last thing I want to do is see us finish that project and have somebody come and say, I got to open it up.
Right.
You know, so let's get, let's, let's work with them to get this done right. Four hundred feet's a long distance. And let's get this done right. Let's help them be successful and in long term. It'll make us more successful, and if we don't have to reopen that road, then the road will last longer, and the community pays, doesn't, doesn't have to pay to do the same job twice.
I wholeheartedly agree. From a timing perspective, it's a real blessing that it, we discovered this or they discovered this, you know, while the road's in, in construction. So absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Scott. Seguing off the mayor's comments about success in grants, I'm going to ask Susan to come up here and talk about the senior services grant levy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is the kind of presentation that you really like to do because it's good news. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about King County Veterans Senior and Human Services Levy and a grant award that the city has been notified of. First, a little bit about this, the funds from this. This is a voter-approved levy, levy, and it was intended to create and enhance the services that we are providing to our seniors, especially to encompass the diversity that we have in King County. And right now, there is, we really are not serving the complete demographic of our population. King County used a new model in how they wanted to implement this grant, and they were strongly encouraging of collaborations among existing centers and with the aim of having senior hubs. They also are very encouraging of the, the need to extend staffing in order to increase capacity. So, and they were aiming at either a geographic area or a cultural group in general, and if awarded, there is no match required for this grant. So along those lines, we worked with, you know, the group of senior centers in our area, and were able to come up with a partnership with the Central Area Senior Center, and that's located in Seattle. Not too far, it's, I think, about sixteen miles total between the two centers. And we were, the two centers together were awarded one point five million dollars for approximately a four and a half year period, starting in September and going through 2023. Des Moines' share of this is a little over five hundred thousand dollars. And our budget, they've given us for 2019 and 2020 would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that money will be aimed at increasing diversity and the amount of population served. We also would like to thank King County Councilmember Dave Up the Grow for his support. So how we're going to use these funds, or how we will use these funds, would be to continue the process that we've begun over the last year or so of doing program attic and facility improvements, adding capacity to better serve all of our residents, and inclusive of all the different demographic groups that make up Des Moines and Normandy Park. The idea of the partnership is that we will be able to leverage the resources between the two centers. We should be able to expand the hours and the programs that are offered. There would be money for staffing. A lot of these would be shared with the Central, particularly cultural outreach, van driver, social worker. We would have approximately ten hours a week allocated to us for a paid social worker, translation services, culturally appropriate food. We also would look to expand, expand the senior veterans that we serve and purchase a van for senior transportation. The next steps would be to bring the grant acceptance to the city council, and that, we expect that grant agreement sometime in September from King County. We would have the funds to purchase the van either late this year or early in 2020. We're beginning our coordination already with the Central Senior Center on the work programming, work programming and staffing, keep the city council updated on our progress, and serve more seniors with fun, inclusive events programs, cultural food, field trips, and classes. I do want to mention one other aspect of this because I want to elaborate a little bit on the cultural aspect of this. And the, the partnership that we formed with the, with the Central, they have a lot of expertise in cultural outreach. And the initial focus would be to try to increase the percentage of African-American and African immigrant seniors that would utilize our services, because they are not well represented in the demographic that we are currently serving. Building on that expertise, we would look to further increase the diversity until we essentially have good outreach to all of the seniors in our community. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Beck?
Susan, would the van be wheelchair-friendly, or is that something where folks with disabilities would still need to rely on Metro's access service?
No, the, the grant amount that we requested for the van would, would be sufficient to purchase a van with a wheelchair lift.
Councilmember Banks, do you have any questions?
I basically have a comment, not necessarily a question. I do appreciate all the work that Susan's put into this effort, and I think the ability to have the diversity that we're looking for in terms of inclusion is going to be extremely rich, and I look forward to seeing all of this come together. So thank you very much.
Any further, any further questions? Doesn't look like it. Before, Michael, before you move forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Banks, I forgot to check with you on the last topic. Did you have a question for Brandon by any chance?
I, I did ask him the question, yes. Thank you.
Oh, you've already had the, okay, you've got that taken care of.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, and your question about the presentation, Michael's moving through his list in, in a slightly modified order.
I gathered that. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Louisa, when the mayor started talking about grants, I felt that would be appropriate time to talk about the receiving this, this grant from, from the senior levy. I want to, a couple of other items. One, regarding Marina redevelopment, and I'm pleased to see Bill Lynn Scott here today. And what we're going to, there's a couple of events that are going to occur relative to Marina redevelopment. On the nineteenth of September, at six PM, we will be having a community meeting at the Yacht Club, Des Moines Yacht Club, to discuss design elements and approaches to the, the appearance of a Marina Steps project and get the community input for that, somewhat in a charrette form, where people identify what their priorities are relative to design elements. And then on the twenty-sixth, the council meeting of the twenty-sixth, we will have our consultants here to kind of report back what happened at the community meeting and to also inform what are the elements that we're anticipating putting in an RFQ for, for the Marina process. So those are a couple of events coming up, and the reason I mentioned Bill is he's spearheading the outreach for us with the Yacht Club and kind of helping inform the community about this opportunity to, to learn more and to participate. Finally, tonight, and I thank you for your patience, we had a long administration report, but I want to discuss briefly the landmark on the sound and give everyone an update to the degree we have an update. Mayor and council members, as you are likely aware, the landmark on the sound building and property was purchased by EPC Holdings 955 LLC on August 26, 2019. This transaction is complete and the deed has been recorded. At this time, I would like to clarify that the city has never owned the building or the property and does not have any control over the purchase or sale of the property. This was a private transaction between the Masons and EPC Holdings. Prior to the sale, the Masons had submitted an application for demolition of the main building and associated structures. On Tuesday of this week, city staff met with the new owner, and he stated that he has not yet determined plans for the property. The city has requested information as to whether he intends to proceed with the previously submitted application. We will continue to keep the council and community updated as appropriate and as we receive information. Thank you. That concludes our report.
Okay, thank you, Michael, and thank you to the members of your team that helped out. At this point, I'm going to bring us back to our regular agenda as, as published. Councilmember Banks, you're welcome to stay on, but if, if you are satisfied, you know, just whenever you're ready.
I am. Thank you. I will sign off now. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll see you soon.
Yeah.
Okay, before we go forward with comments from the public, I want to read the proclamations from tonight's consent agenda into the record. The first one is, "The Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month." And the second proclamation was, "The Des Moines City Council invites all residents to participate and proclaim the month of September as National Recovery Month." Both were signed this, the fifth day, September 2019, by myself. So this takes us forward now to the comments from the public. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state the name, your name and, and the city in, in which you reside, and you'll have three minutes. The first person is Marty Coista? Roista, my mistake. I do it every time.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, Mayor. I'm Marty Coister. I work for the Housing Development Consortium, Seattle, King County. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, we are the 180-member association that focuses on affordable housing, preservation and development, and homelessness in King County. I have been here with you before as we were launching the South King County Housing and Homelessness Partnership. Some of you may remember that interlocal and the effort behind that. We are also the organization that leads the campaign that gives you Visceral or the Vets, Seniors, and Human Services levies. So those are the kinds of things that we do in the community. I'm a Burien resident, and I'm happy to be here with you tonight. I want to thank you for passing the resolution on House Bill 1406. King County right now faces an affordable housing crisis that many cities and, and regions around the country are not immune from. To characterize ours a little bit, I will tell you that we are 156,000 homes short today, affordable homes, were we to house all the people who are inadequately housed or what we call cost-burdened. In order to address that, the county has said we will have to think about doing this in a phased approach until 2040. We need to build 44,000 homes every five years around the county. That means that no city is going to be immune from the need to help us figure out how we're going to do that. In about three or four weeks, McKenzie will release the second phase of their work, looking at where we're at as a county, and you will hear that we have lost 93,000 affordable homes in the last 10 years due to rent increases and the change in the dimension of how people can afford housing. In fact, within just a few years, there will be no, I mean, zero. In fact, within just a few years, there will be no, I mean zero, 30 to 50% AMI naturally occurring affordable housing left anywhere in King County. So we all have a challenge in front of us. 1406, House Bill, is a gift from Olympia. It does not provide new revenue, it just allows us to divert revenue for local uses. And it is a gift in that we all live in the state with the most regressive tax structure. And so the fact that they're willing to allow cities to retain that tax is critical. This means roughly about, I believe, $29,000 a year for the city of Des Moines. As has been mentioned by the mayor, you have the ability through your interlocal with the rest of the cities in South King County, in Skip, to pool those resources, which could end up bringing about a million dollars a year available for some kind of development or preservation of housing. So I strongly encourage you to consider that option. I want to thank you for the work you've done so far on this effort and appreciate what you've taken care of here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think City Manager Mathias has a comment here.
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that, you know, our thinking at this point and what we'll discuss with the council and the utilization of those funds would be to pool them with the coalition. And I also want to acknowledge Nicole Nordham here is one of our delegates to the committee, as is Councilmember Banks, and as am I, depending. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
The next person is Mr. Rick Johnson.
Rick Johnson, Redondo Beach. Our men and women in blue do a fantastic job. Our men and women in black continue to fail us. I want to thank the Sees Crews that keep up Wooton Park and the waterfront areas, keeping it clean and well-kept. I've got a list here that I made up. I call it Rick's Wish List. Back in the 60s, Redondo had a garden club and they hanged flower baskets along Beach Drive. I thought maybe that would be something nice that would enhance the area. Wooton Park, gazebo, needs some tender loving care. Two more raised crosswalks on Beach Drive. The traffic is, just doesn't slow down. School zones to 15 miles per hour, as on 240th and 16th Avenue, has turned into a major arterial along with Beach Drive. Lighting on the boat ramp. Restrooms in the pier turned into changing rooms. If we could save that bathroom, the old restroom, and make it into a changing room, it would be nice for the divers. I went by there the night coming here and the lower park was packed with divers. And they were out there 24/7 and they're changing and they're in the rain, they're in the cold. And it'd be nice to see that if we're going to do something to enhance that. And also, when they get the reefs in, it's going to bring a lot more divers to the area. Reopen the boat slips at the Marina for safety and convenience for boaters. August 8th, you had your retreat meeting. I was in California, but I listened to it on the internet, all three hours and 35 minutes of it. I had a hard time, and I've been saying this since I started coming here in 2015, is that these mics don't pick up you all the time. If you're not, if you don't have it right in front of you, you're back there, you're talking over here, I can't hear you. I wish you either extend a mic or get a new, get new ones because I've seen other ones that come out like this far out, twice the distance. I did an unscientific poll on Redondo, next door Redondo, about the Marina, the fishing dock. 255 people answered my poll. 98% were in favor of saving it. Some of them wanted the work done yesterday. They can't wait. I don't know if they're going to like the two to four years. I guess that's, could you do it? Oh, on the pier that's down there? I can't remember when they tore down. There goes that. You didn't fix that yet.
(laughing).
Should be penalized 30 seconds extra. Does that, that pier, do you know if that's the old pier from the Marina?
The pier itself now.
Huh?
The fishing pier now.
Yeah. Is that any part of the old pier?
A portion of.
Okay. Well, that was put in front in 1958. And I don't know what we could do. You can't put crystal piling in down there anymore. So we got to do something like to deal with the boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Ann Craker.
Always a pleasure to follow, Rick. I'm also from Redondo Beach. Now that's a thing. Part of Des Moines, it's Redondo Beach. Today I had the great pleasure to go to the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Planning Board meeting with Tracy. And I always wanted to comment on the, via public comment, for the Vision 2050 draft plan. So I just thought I would underscore a couple of the things that I said there because I think they're entirely appropriate for our city and of course, some of the issues that we're dealing with. Part of what I was just, that I, of the environmental and climate groups who are commenting are very appropriate for us. So we should know and be, in my opinion, be with their same goals, which is climate pollution reduction targets. They don't have targets in their plan and they need accountability. They need decision-making through a climate justice lens. They should make sure projects and plans are equitably reduced emissions in a way that supports adopted emissions reduction targets. In other words, if you have emissions reduction in one part of the county and that counts as overall, but it doesn't help with the problems in another part of the county, like under the airplane path, that shouldn't count. That needs to be equitably done. Evaluating consistently whether we're on the right track, so we need to, they need to do this every two years. And centering of climate justice, which is the regional equity strategy informing its greenhouse gas strategy to ensure those who are disproportionately harmed by climate change will be centered in mitigation and adaptation strategies. So I was just underscoring all of those pieces and also just adding that natural systems have economic value. So they should have solutions when they're looking at a process that include the natural solutions. In other words, would infiltration work rather than a storm sewer drain or a system? Especially since health costs and benefits are definitely increased when we can do it naturally. And add these to the range of solutions. And finally, connect the whole region, think of each process as part of the whole and do it one plan. So housing is equal to transportation, is equal to equitable solutions, is equal to pollution disruption, is equal to carbon emission, you know, all of that together. And that's not easy to do, but I'm glad that our city is going to be putting in a set of comments too. So, thank you, Tracy, also for driving back and forth. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That's the last person who signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Okay. Seeing no one forward, I will go forward to board and committee reports and council member comments, and we will start with Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to talk a quick moment about the pier, the fishing pier in Redondo, and leaders in the community like you, Rick, Ann, Harry, Nadia. What I would ask is you preach a message of patience. This is something we, like, I think the best thing was making lemonade out of lemons. But we got an opportunity here to do it right rather than fast. And that's a better solution, long-term. It's going to save us money. It's going to increase the values of their properties down there. It's a big win and its only cost is going to be patience. So I ask you to preach that message because that's, we need that to be a positive factor. We inherited this, we have, we're going to fix it, but that's what's going to be required. I think that's a small price to pay for what is going to be a greater good for us all. That's going to check off a lot of boxes on your list that you just gave us, Rick. So, anyway, I'm just going to say that. A lot of things have happened. We really haven't had a regular meeting since July. I'm going to keep it to a minimum. I know you're all relieved. But I have to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the city and Destination Des Moines and the residents and all the volunteers and the parade participants for the parade. I thought we had a great parade. It was a community builder and those are very important. A few, so I just want to say that. I also have to note that the bootleggers event, for those of you attended, was again legendary. A couple of cars, if you didn't attend, from the 1920s happened to show up out of the blue and provide their share of the cut that went fast, we'll put it that way. I attended the skateboard meeting and we got to meet with a few of the state legislators and the big discussion was I-976. If you don't know what that is, that's Iman's initiative on the car tabs. While there's a bunch of things rolled up to it, one in particular that's the biggest concern is the valuation of your vehicle. One thing that's in it is the ability for a TBD, a Transportation Benefit District from the cities. As we've been proving, we're very fiscally responsible and we get things done with money. And $40 a year on a car tab is money well spent because we just paved 223rd, we're doing 216th. We are actually doing things that we couldn't do for years, 12, 15 years? I'm not sure what it is, but it's been a long time. My encouragement to you is we need to, we need to vote against that because the simple fix of paying less is going to cost us more in the long term, despite the fact that some of the other issues that are rolled up into it simply don't add up and it is just going to cost us. So I, anyway.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah.
For or against a particular position is technically not allowed at the day.
Okay, then.
You can voice your concerns about certain areas of an initiative.
That is my concern. That we could not continue what we do. Thank you.
All you can do is advocate that someone cast.
Appreciate the, appreciate the check. Anyway, other than that, I just, looking forward to the SR3 partnership. I think that's going to be a fantastic relationship. And, Michael, again, I want to congratulate you on your award. I think it's well deserved and I think, as you said, it's an award for your whole team and I applaud your team. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beck?
I echo that, Michael. Good job. We're lucky to have you. So I'm proud of you for your accomplishment. Not much of a report, I just had a great several weeks off and I'm glad to be back to work. I will say thank you to the surprising number of people that reached out to me. Apparently I did make social media, but somehow the word got out that I was in a car wreck in front of my house. I got rear-ended and I have a little concussion. And wouldn't you know it, Mr. First Responder was the first to respond before the 911 was even dispatched. I mean, this guy's got a radar, I can't believe, but he happened to be on his way home from work. And so thank you, Vic, for your concern. But I am going to use that occasion. The other car apparently was totaled and mine wasn't, but boy, I had my bell rung. And one of my neighbors said, "Well, that's all right because you're kind of dingy anyway." But, yeah, when you're in a, when you're in a crash and that thing was loud and my ears are still ringing, you realize how fragile the human body is. And so, yeah, my adrenaline was going and I'm going to be fine. But I'm going to take this occasion to do something that my colleague Jeremy always does at this time of year, and he talks about safety while you're driving and especially around schools this time of year. And this accident happened right in front of the new Des Moines Elementary School, right in front of my house. And apparently the other driver was distracted. So I'm going to use this occasion to steal your thunder and say, please be careful. There are parents taking their kids to schools and do not be texting when you're driving. Be very alert of kids that are out there, the increased traffic, school buses and all of that. When you're in an accident, you realize that in a second's notice, in a split second, things can change and a life-changing moment can happen. So I had that reality check. But thank you to all the people that reached out to me to express their concern. That meant a lot to me. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're glad you're doing well. Councilmember Nettie?
Thanks for mentioning that, Rob. Slowing down in school zones. I just wanted to comment on the consent agenda. It's great that we can accept a grant to assist in the redoing the floor in the beach park auditorium. It's good that we're always looking for those to help out. I just wanted to mention that Des Moines Police Foundation annual auction is October 5th at the Four Points. They're raising money this year for AEDs and officers' cars. They've been selling shirts and stickers and stuff. They were down at the farmer's market a couple of weeks ago. Tickets could be bought for this event at desmoinespolicefoundation.com. The event is $70, $75 a ticket. A table of 10 is 700 bucks. Last year I was cooking burgers for this event and we did rather well. We ended up with a K-9 officer out of the deal. So it was time well spent. But this time I get to enjoy myself. So if you're out and about and you want to do that, please buy your tickets early. They sold out last year and come join us up there. And I think that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Councilmember Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll switch it up a little bit and talk about my unanimous consent agenda comments. Item number three about the, Marty Coistre spoke to us about that a little bit earlier today. It's a great opportunity for cities to help with the current crisis. And our existing ILA affords us the opportunity, if we choose to, to pool resources for a more effective solution. So I'm happy about that. Item number four, of course, we want to accept a grant for a new floor in the Van Center, of course. Number seven, we, this has been discussed at length in previous sessions and even though I might have some concerns about the technology, I supported this agreement, so. And then number nine, the recycling, thankful for almost $12,000 in grant money to assist with our recycling program. So we had a great, a great number of items on our consent agenda tonight. So, there were so, I had such a busy August, so many events and so many things, so I wanted to talk about it. August is a busy month in the Des Moines community and thankful for all my fun that's safe. I heart DMPPD. So, I think we still have these available if you want to support DM, Des Moines Police. To them, I toasted a lemonade, but hard it was not. Unlike the brews in Woodmont or the beach park, sipped and bought. I enjoyed movies and markets. There are, I think, three more Des Moines farmer's markets. And here's gear you can buy to support the market. I got one of these. Isn't that cute? It zips up in front. It's a fashion show tonight too, right? Poms, fashion show. Yeah, oh, the Gucci bag. It's all coming out of a Gucci bag. Movies, markets and music on the beach and especially our Cambodian friends. Gifts they gave to each. They gave us. It was the sweetest thing when we went down to this Cambodian cultural event. They gave us, they, our names were on the bags and then they gave us these scarves. So sweet.
Men don't have. This year.
You could say the schedule was a marathon. Oh, yeah. And I ran a half. Can you believe it? 13 miles. The Iron Horse Half. So proud of myself. I appreciated our leaders from the 33rd for coffee, questions and a laugh. And the team that's building in the Alliance of Southside is drawing partners and investors as we display our community with pride. Creating events, services and community, our seniors are a great part of that, but they definitely need more volunteers, people who can go to bat. Preparing our future with a vision that is strong and bright is important for a city or a region, but also a personal fight. So I'm thankful for the tender reminder and moments to reflect as Ed Pina was remembered. So I'm thankful for the tender reminder and moments to reflect, as Ed Pena was remembered for his incredible life's effect. Thank you. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm glad to see you're outfitted for next summer's wardrobe. Deputy Mayor Pennington?
Well, I, I'm sitting here trying to figure out how to make a poem or a rhyme. Franchise Committee, Public Safety, I don't think I can do it. But, anyway, I attended several things over the course of the last bit of time. But one of the, the one thing that, that I did have the opportunity to attend was the presentation of, of the City Manager's Ward over in, in Eastern Washington. And that was really an incredible event and incredible time and well-deserved and thank you so much for the opportunity to, to be there and, and do that. So, good job. We, we had a ad hoc franchise committee agreement where our committee, and I'm not sure if the mayor's gonna report on it or not, but it was really exciting stuff. We looked at the, the Comcast franchise renewal and the recycle rate request. So, anyway, exciting stuff, not stuff of a poem, I don't think. But more to come on, more to come on that. We'll, we'll have some information brought forward, I believe, at our 26th meeting on, on this, so you'll get more information there. The other thing that we did was, was the Public Safety Committee that was tonight. We covered a lot of things and in the interest of time, I'm, I'm not gonna go into great depth on each one of them, but we talked about code enforcement and the work that, that our code enforcement officer Cory is doing. They've got like two-hundred-and-twenty new cases. Some of them were carried over from last year. They've done a tremendous amount of work at, at, at taking care of those and getting those things off the books. They've, they've, they have forty-seven houses that are, are high-risk houses and they've, they've, they've whittled them down, they take them ten at a time and they've got the top ten down there and then, then the second ten. So they're doing a tremendous amount of work there. They, they had a slide program with, with that and man, I tell ya, it, somebody in there said, you know, pictures are a thousand words and, and it's amazing what, what's out there in our neighborhoods, but what's more amazing is, is how quickly they're resolving those issues. We talked a little bit about, let's see, we went into community outreach. There's a whole host of things coming up here. There's the Citizens Academy. I think there's still a couple of spots in that. There's three self-defense classes coming up. Interesting with those, they're gonna teach high school and middle school kids on self-defense. That's, that's starting in the fall, so check the website. There's an active shooter seminar coming up, so, and that one's full, so they're gonna have to try to figure out a way to, to maybe add some more of those. So it, it's just a ton of stuff, so go, go to their website. All that information is on there. We talked about emergency management and we got some updates with emergency management. As you know, the new Assistant Chief is, is one of them, one of the folks that's taking, taking the lead on that. We've got a lot of things going on, they're looking at grant funding. We've got this, for the, for the state of Washington, there's part of a federal grant. The allocation is, is three to five million a year, so we're trying to get a piece of that so that we can look at pre-hazard mitigation and put together programs related to that. And also public outreach and they're gonna do some public outreach. They'll be at the Farmer's Market on September 21st and go down and weigh in on some of the, the areas that you view as hazards in the city, but they're just doing some outreach to get, get some information from that. We talked about prostitution impound areas and what that is, is our city actually is working with, with a couple of different agencies and some of Seattle Police and King County Sheriff's Department, but they're working with a lot of different agencies up along the highway to, to look at impound zones and, and actually making the laws much tougher when it comes to the Johns and, and prostitution and human trafficking. So we will be seeing on the 26th a draft ordinance as a committee. We said, you know, go ahead, we looked at the initial one and actually made some suggestions to make it a little bit more comprehensive and that will be coming on the 26th to the dais for us to vote on. So we look forward to that coming to your, your packet. Our city, believe it or not, is actually one of the lead cities when it comes to the number of stings that we do and the number of, of, the amount of work that we do relative to human trafficking and prostitution, much more than a lot of other cities. So we can be, we can be proud of that. That's, that's a really important thing that, that we get a handle on and, and, and that, it's primarily up along the highway. So the last thing I have here is an invitation to the public for the September 11th ceremony held at South King Fire and Rescue at Station 64. The address is 3700 South 320th. Starts at one o'clock in the afternoon. If you've not been to this memorial, go out and see it. It's, it's a pretty incredible memorial. It was built by, by the firefighters and some volunteers from the community and donations from the community. It's, it's, I think, the only memorial, one of the few memorials even on, on the West Coast that has artifacts from all four craft sites. It's a, it's an extremely beautiful memorial and a lot of hard work and, and time is put in there. If you're gonna go see it, see it during the day, but take, take the time to go at night. It's well-lit and it's a, it's a pretty cool thing and it really speaks to the tragedy that happened on September 11th. So please, you're all welcome, though it's at one o'clock and the, we'll have a retired captain from New York City that will be there speaking. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Nettie, you had a follow-up?
Sorry, I wanted to follow up. Some of you wait-to-hear every year, my girls hold a lemonade stand fundraiser and this year they raised a little over a thousand dollars. It goes to Shop With A Cop this year. So they did that and reached just over the ten thousand dollar mark over the last few years raising funds, so that's all I had.
That's fabulous. Okay, I guess I didn't think I had a lot, I've got a few things. To follow up on the auditorium floor, we're not just replacing a floor. I asked a few questions about it and I, I may need some help from Susan Cesar here, but the floor that they're looking at putting on there, it hasn't been designed yet, I don't believe, but it's a wooden floor. We have a number of people who rent that, that facility that wanna dance and it's really hard to dance on a textured concrete floor. So I believe if you could tell us a little bit more about that, I think it would help people just understand.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to. You know, the genesis of this grant agreement really came from our long-term rental with the Seattle Theater Group and we, we were trying to figure out a way to put a floor in for this season and what ended up happening is they put a temporary wood floor because they really can't dance, there's not enough give in a concrete floor. As well, there are other types of activities, athletic activities, that need a little more forgiving floor. So we were fortunate enough to receive a grant and there will be some design work. We, we only had preliminary look and talking to vendors, but we'll have a design that will be a permanent addition, but it will float on the floor, so the concrete floor will still be there. And we're kinda excited because it will expand the ability to rent that facility for other activities.
Thank you very much. The other thing is that in the ad hoc franchise committee meeting tonight, we had some folks from Recology there to discuss with us some information that will come forward again, I believe on the, is it the 26th?
26th.
26th, yeah. Essentially, there ha, they have been, as all waste management companies have been impacted by the, the policies in China changing around recycling materials. And then there was also an explosion on the Vancouver Natural Gas Pipeline and they use compressed natural gas in their trucks. It's, it is a commodity that is relatively stable, but because of that, there will be, you know, there is an anticipated spike. It's believed it'd probably be short-term, maybe the duration of a year or something while they reestablish the, you know, everything else. But CNG's been very stable and they've shared, they shared that information with us. They still believe it's the right way for them, the right fuel for them to use and, and they will be in to, to talk to us at an upcoming, at an upcoming meeting. So I wanted to make sure that we understood that. I wanna thank Rotary for, again, their community event, Blues and Brews. Had the opportunity to spend just under four hours down there and it was a nice day. The new stage is the same stage that we're using for concerts in the park in a different location. Sound was great, bands were great. The place is packed. I haven't heard their numbers, but I don't think you could fit anymore in there. It was really quite an event. So, and, and it, it just brings the community together. I also wanna thank the community members and the friends and the team here at the City of Des Moines for their help with my father's celebration of life. For those who didn't know, he passed on July 13th and I was then faced with the responsibility of trying to put together an event because he worked with people on a lot of different levels, anywhere from United Way to the Boys and Girls Clubs, to the school board, to here at the dais at, at the Des Moines City Council. It wasn't easy and I will say that the staff here made it as easy as it could be. I am not only proud to represent the city from this dais, but I am extremely proud of this team and what it does and how it comes together to take care of people in the community. So I wanted to say thank you there. And then I also don't wanna forget that the Betts Redondo Boardwalk Dedication will be at 5:30 on Monday, September 9th and, and I have already spoken to Mr. Johnson. I'd like it to be known that, that happens to be the week of my birthday and anniversary and I won't be there. And it's not because I don't support this effort, I am very, very happy that the city is going forward with this. And I wanna make sure that my absence isn't seen as anything other than the fact that it's my birthday and anniversary that week and so I will not be in town. But I, Eric, I really, I appreciate you bringing this, this, the family and the, the idea of the dedication, the family history to this council so we could act on it. Again, I think it's the right thing for not only the, it's not only the right thing to do, but it's the right thing for the community and, you know, I will be there in spirit. Okay, and then the last thing I wanna mention is, folks, we had another birthday at the dais. Matt Mahoney.
Sure.
And, and, did you have a birthday while we were out, too?
Yeah.
Oh, my, that's right.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, thirty-nine, wow. No, really? Oh, you're wearing it very well. More than I can say for him. So, anyway.
[laughing]
Anyway, so here you have for August and September's children. So, and that will take us forward to our new business tonight. We have our, our first item. Now, council, are we okay? Do you want to press forward or do we need a short break?
Come on.
Everybody's on a roll.
Yeah, let's go.
Staff says, "Let's go." Okay. So the first item is property acquisition for Midway Park Expansion in Pacific Ridge at 22104 28th Avenue South and we have a staff presentation by our Assistant Director of Parks, Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nicole Nordel, the Assistant Director of Parks and Senior Services, and I'm here to talk to you about Midway Park Conservation Futures Tax Fund Grant that we received. Is this my right thing? Oh, I got it, okay. So earlier this year-
It worked. Oh, did it? Oh, sorry.
Or maybe you did it.
No, I-
Okay. So, really quickly, Conservation Futures Tax Funds, it's a dedicated portion of property taxes collected throughout King County and then utilized to purchase open space lands. So earlier this year, the city, we were awarded six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, nine-hundred dollars in these funds to acquire multiple parcels adjacent to our Midway Park. We also were awarded these funds without a match, which is really great. This was due in large part to the diversity and low-income nature of that neighborhood. So the Pacific Ridge neighborhood, Midway Park is the only open space in this neighborhood, which has the largest deficit of parks and open space in our city. The park provides critical access to physical activity, healthy foods through the community garden there and passive recreation. The goal continues to be to expand open space in this vital neighborhood park, which is a priority both in our comprehensive plan and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So this last May, with your approval, the city successfully purchased a vacant parcel at 22106 28th Avenue South for sixty-five thousand dollars. And then in the interest of continued expansion at Midway Park, we were able to meet with the family residing at the parcel directly next door to this and explore purchasing this property. After negotiations, a fair market purchase price of four-hundred-and-sixty thousand was agreed upon, plus some additional closing and relocation costs. So the purchase of this property will close January 15th of next year. The family was able to, we negotiated that they'll be able to remain in the home until October of next year. And throughout this process, there was a lot of back and forth, but we'd like to acknowledge Janelle Stoneback, who's our windemere, the real estate agent, for her dedication to this effort and continuing to support it. The remainder of these funds will be utilized for eligible city acquisition expenses. And then, sorry that this map is not fitting nicely on my page, but the corner, the red circled parcel, that is the most recent acquisition. So that's the family that we negotiated with and reached the four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollar price. So basically, the next steps for your consideration are to approve the agreement for the purchase of this property for the four-hundred-and-sixty plus closing costs and direct the administration to bring forward a budget amendment reflecting that cost. And then also direct administration to proceed with demolition of the structures, so the home on the property there, to make other improvements as necessary to move forward with expanding our open space.
Okay, is there a motion? I saw Councilmember Back and then Councilmember Nettie.
I move to approve the agreement for the purchase of the property at 22104 28th Avenue South in Des Moines for the purchase price of four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars plus closing costs and direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment reflecting the cost for the purchase.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Back and seconded by Councilmember Nettie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Back?
I move to direct administration to proceed with the demolition of structures on the property at 22104 28th Avenue South in Des Moines and to make other improvements as necessary to convert this residential property to park property once the current residents vacate the residence in late 2020.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Back, seconded by Councilmember Nettie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, pass both. Motion's passed six-zero. I would like it to go on record that although Councilmember Banks is no longer on the phone with us and so she could not be part of this vote, she did speak to me and said she would, she was definitely in favor of this acquisition. So, there you go. All right, let's move forward to our next item of new business, that's our draft Vision 2050 Plan. We have a staff presentation by our Planning and Development Services Manager, Ms. Denise Lathrow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Denise Lathrow, Planning and Development Services Manager. We are pleased to share with you for your consideration a proposed comment letter on the draft Vision 2050- the Draft Vision 2050 Plan. Staff collaborated with Councilmember Buxton and considered documents from prior city planning efforts in the development of the comments. We are asking for your authorization for the mayor and the city manager to sign the letter, and the comment period ends on September 16th. So, Vision 2050 is the growth management strategy for the Puget Sound region, which includes King, Pierce, Snohomish, and Kitsap Counties. It considers how the region will accommodate the additional people and jobs that are forecast by 2020. It establishes multi-county planning policies that provide overall guidance and direction for planning processes and decision-making at both the regional and local levels. It also updates regional geographies that provide the framework for how growth will be distributed. And so, Des Moines is now considered a high-capacity transit community, which has implications for our community's ability to accept more people, housing, and jobs in our community. So, Des Moines has participated in the update of Vision, and some of our comments that we have previously provided are addressed in the draft plan. However, there were a number of comments that our letter provides recommended policy amendments that further emphasize our positions on several key issues, one being the planning and funding for the last mile east-west access to transit. This is going to be critical for our community in terms of the value and use of public transit investments. Recognizing the state legislation that authorized the siting of a new primary commercial aviation facility in Washington State, we recommended adding a policy in the transportation component that addressed the expansion of passenger-only ferry service. And then, adding some emphasis and modifications to transportation policies related to the planning and funding needs to include high-capacity transit areas and not just the urban centers and communities with stations because, as a high-capacity transit community, we were expected to accommodate growth, but we don't have a station in our community. And this will be critical to sort of tie the funding strategy with the growth strategy and so that we will get some of the monies that PSRC allocates for transportation improvements in particular. So, with that, that concludes the presentation. There's suggested motion here, and at this time, we open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Back?
Just one question to Denise. So, it's always been a passion of mine about someday seeing a passenger-only ferry service. So, I know that's on the plan. In your opinion, is this something that it would be a Washington State ferry type of a thing, or possibly like a county, Kitsap County did their own transit thing, running back and forth from Kitsap to Coleman Dock? Maybe Pierce County would do something, or do you have any direction of who would maybe do that?
So, Councilmember, I'd like to respond to that. So, we've had discussions with both private providers relative to establishing ferry service. There's a discussion that's currently taking place about the idea of perhaps a number of cities doing a syndication where you could purchase two boats versus just one, and you'd have redundancy in the routes. The other thing is looking always ongoing at public participation in a ferry, but there's a very heightened, I think Scott could corroborate this, that there's been a heightened level of increase, of interest in Des Moines as a location for ferry service, serving South King County and Tacoma, Seattle, and then across the bay. So, we've looked at all of those, and we're pursuing all of those, and we've had some very influential people take tours recently who are very supportive of finding a way to make that happen. Obviously, there's a huge expense associated with that, but that's something that's definitely on the table as, in this context, as congestion and demand for transportation modes increase.
Love to hear that. And then, if that were to happen, and say there was a two ferry system running up and down from Tacoma to Des Moines to Seattle and back and forth, is it possible on our radar that the Des Moines Marina would actually house those boats and the maintenance and operations and upkeep of those ships could actually happen here?
Yeah, you're probably 47 steps ahead of us.
Forty-seven years ahead of us on the 50-year plan, but...
All we got was the name for one of the boats. We're going to call it "There and Back," so...
I'll accept that answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
I move to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the comment letter on the Draft Vision 2050 Plan substantially in the form submitted in Attachment 1.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Nutting and a second by Councilmember Buxton. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Buxton?
So, first of all, I just wanted to say terrific presentation, not only tonight, Denise, thank you, but in the packet, the way that the vision process and what we were considering has been discussed, and you just did, I don't know who is responsible for all of this in the packet, but it was very well done. So, thank you for that. And I want to thank you for your, I personally just worked with Susan and Denise and their support and collaboration with me. I have a colleague, and, you know, I sit on this board representing Sound Cities Association, which is a group of people representing 37 cities. You know, one of my colleagues from that organization basically said they got, they were able to get no help from their staff in regard to reviewing this document and giving them input, collaboration. They were on their own. And so, my experience with the staff was tremendous and so much help. And like Denise briefly mentioned, everything that we've been able to come up with and submit so far has been able to move forward into this document in the favor of our city, even though our representation into the process is through Sound Cities Association. It's just been a great opportunity for us, so great, great work. Really appreciate it. So, I did also want to mention in a brief synopsis of today that Growth Management Policy Board did meet in regard to this document, and there was concentrated discussion on several issues, but kind of a notable mention of aviation issues from outside our airport communities. So, Nancy Tosta, for example, is also on this board, but Dr. Chen, the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, and also Maria Batiola, the Environmental Justice Coordinator for Centro Del Raza on Beacon Hill, both of them made notable comments in regard to aviation issues. So, that was encouraging to us because one of our primary comments in our letter that we're considering tonight is one of our primary issues all the time, it seems like. So, that was encouraging, more of a regional, it's becoming more of a regional concern. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney?
I agree. I particularly liked the language that was adjusted for the airport. I think the fact is, the mindset we need to get across the region is that there is, by 2050, a second airport somewhere regionally, wherever it may be, but it is there and functional. And making that assumption that that's the way it's going to be is pertinent to our letter. And the other one I liked is, I just wanted to call out, is essentially, we bookend two light rail stations, but they're not technically in our city, but we do do the impact. And I thought the language was very well crafted in that particular aspect to also include us in that mitigation and consideration because we will be impacted just as much as they are, if not more, because of the way they're placed. And so, I thought you did an excellent job in that. I just want to call that out.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Wow, council, we made it through a lot. We are at the end of our agenda tonight, and so far, and that means we're at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be on September 26th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved. Second.
A motion made by Deputy Mayor Pennington, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.